Is town report discussion, just a brief one.
Okay.
I had one on zoning.
Anybody else have anything?
Personnel matter?
Personnel on zoning, yes.
And any need to amend the agenda?
Other than striking the first item of old business, I don't have anything.
If we adopt the agenda as amended.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and anything, any corrections on the minutes, December 16th? Oh, sorry, Hank. Any questions on the orders?
And I see that, well, we got about $10,000 worth of salt. We're probably so early in the winter, you can't tell that we're probably doing okay. Weather hasn't been too bad, it's been pretty good winters so far.
My sense is that we're generally doing pretty well.
That's what I kind of thought.
Even these small little storms require the response of material, unfortunately.
I have a question on the one in tonight's packet. Voting machine coding, what is that? It's 1710.
Oh, LHS, yeah. That is the company that I think the clerk's office works with to develop the ballots. And so, I don't know specifically what the coding item is, but it's probably to help the machines process ballots as they come in. But I'll see if I can get a better.
No, just curious.
One other item, this hydrocedar, I see it was 6640. Is that, do we get a reimbursement for the grant, or is that our share?
No, we do. That's not, that's before we get reimbursed. I think it's a $5,000 reimbursement.
Oh, I don't cut that.
That's right.
Pretty well.
Yeah.
Not out, but it cut it down a lot.
Yeah, it pays for the lion's share of it, for sure.
That's good.
By the way, Dave, the description is AccuVote coding, so I'm sorry, I can't be more specific.
Okay.
Helen, I'm sure that authorized that.
Doesn't it need to be recoded on, on the general election day?
I don't know. I have no idea.
It could be that with every election.
With every election.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else on the orders?
Mr. Hooker's on his way.
Oh, is he?
We're almost over.
What?
Nothing.
Okay. He probably forgot.
By the way, there was a discussion about the ballots in the bridge replacement fund at the last meeting. I confirmed with Pat, the number is about 280,000. She gave me her report. But that's before the 110 that we're gonna put into the salt shed as our local match. So that's where I got to the 170 that I estimated for at the last meeting. And of course, as we know, we're looking at about 100 on the bridge repair on the truck route bridge. So it's depleting. To a certain extent. Omnia will help us with that Depot Hill, I mean that Kennedy Hill Bridge repair.
How long, while we're discussing the bridge, how long before, you talk about Depot, before that bridge is impassable?
I'd like to tee that up for you. I do have a bridge inspection report that's kind of frightening about that bridge. And we do have an estimate from an engineer to do the design work to rehab the bridge. The engineering design itself would be in the neighborhood of $35,000. But this is a highly recommended covered bridge specialist. And so, I'd be more than happy to put that on the agenda for the next inspection. I can show you the report and show you the write-up quote from the engineering firm.
I mean, we've got signs there for people to go slow, but very few people do. And I think that's accelerating the damage to it.
Yeah.
Now you're slowing down.
It is an issue we have to deal with. In the past, some of these grants have been available for things like a bridge rehab. But other than the structures grant, which is still in process, all the other grants have been redirected to water quality. And because the rehab of the bridge shouldn't affect the water quality, but just help the bridge in terms of stability, we're no longer eligible for a lot of those different grants that there used to be on that topic. So if we wanted to get this designed, we'd probably have to come out of pocket ourselves for that 35,000.
But it would be helping water quality, because if a car goes through it and goes in the creek, it's not gonna help water quality. Just, I'm just, I realize I'm stretching it, but.
I'm not happy to make that pitch.
Yep.
They can't guarantee the outcome.
Technically, you're not stretching it.
That Depot Bridge is a long ways from being the old original covered bridge. The bottom has two big steel grinders that totally support the floor and the sides didn't reach to it.
That's right. It's kind of a covered bridge aesthetically, but it's not like the law construction, that's for sure. Is it Butch Shaw that does all that speed racing through the bridge, Dave?
I'm not, I'm not saying a word.
He looks guilty.
He is.
You're turning pretty red.
And he's muted, so we can hear him.
Even better.
Here we go.
All right, town managers regarding?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Happy New Year, everybody. First, I'd like to let you know a little bit about the moving parts and pieces in the Pittsburgh Police Department. Part-time police officer Eric Wilder, a resident of Fairhaven, has recently resigned from the police department citing his long commute and the recent arrival of winter. He's been with us.
12 years?
12 years. And did fine service. We wished him well, and certainly, I think he plans to be working closer to home. So good for him. As you also know, part-time officer Scott Bigelow retired recently. On the other side of the equation, Pittsburgh resident Dave Sulya Jr. has just begun his work as a fully fledged part-time police officer for the town. So I think he's gotta gobble up a lot of those hours, correct? Yep. I am pleased to report that the town's new ladder truck arrived Friday, December 18th, just a couple of days after Brandon's fire department took ownership of our old ladder truck. So that really could not have worked out better in terms of coming and going of equipment. And thanks, of course, to Chief Hooker, Chief Hempel, and everyone else associated with making those transactions work out so smoothly. And to Chuck Charbonneau, who did some kind of last-minute rehab at the fire department to allow the taller ladder truck to get in without a problem. I'm now told, as you've seen in tonight's packet, that Casella is expecting to begin installing the concrete block wall, the salt shed, over the two weeks beginning next week. Apparently, they've had some issues with their tractor, but they're planning on beginning that and doing that over a two-week period, starting next week. And then it'll be the steel and fabric roof structure to be attached, all of which they say now should be done by the end of February. Zoning Officer Jeff Biasusy has relocated his office space to the assessor's office with adjusted hours to avoid overlap with the assessor or the assister's secretary. So that means Jeff will be in the town offices going forward Wednesdays from 1:00 p.m. to closing at 4:30, and all day on Friday, 8:00 to 3:00 p.m. Most of you probably know that the town office has an, is called an inclined platform wheelchair lift in the staircase behind Kelly over there. Unfortunately, this is a 1986 unit, obviously installed right after our 1985 building was complete. And it's now no longer working. I've contacted our local electrician, Larry McDuff, who says he's not able to perform repairs or find parts. The company has closed its doors many years ago. I've done some research and located two other wheelchair lift sales reps from different companies based in Vermont. And we're seeking pricing on both A, possible replacement of this unit, or B, find out if the old unit can simply be repaired. In any event, we have something of a problem, because we, in my memory, only ever used it to haul freight up and down, voting machines and whatnot, and that's apparently a no-no, to use those for freight. And also, we're supposed to be having annual inspections of a wheelchair lift and having registered the unit with the state back in 2001 or something. So anyway, we hope to get a, one of these representatives to come over and assess the situation and let us know realistically what our options are, if any, to replace that unit in a cost-effective way. It's convenient, but we can live without it, I think, if we have to. The town has received a mailing from a developer of a solar, of a new solar project proposed for Deer Lane on the border between Pittsburgh and Proctor. I think it's kind of more of an expansion of an existing project. Anyway, I reached out to the developer, and he's agreed to contact the planning commission and perhaps present at their February 25th meeting and to attend the March 3rd meeting of the select board to discuss what he has in mind. That mailing is in your packets. Finally, the town has received our LGER grants. They were really two separate COVID-related spending grant reimbursements that we submitted. So we collected just shy of $15,000 between the two grants, so that's good news.
So, OSHA or whatever, do they require us to have that? How did that lift happen to be put in there in the first place?
Good question. Does anybody know?
I believe you need handicapped access.
The seller?
If it's just used for storage, as opposed to the office space? All right, well, I can.
Well, I was just curious.
I know, for the basement, I didn't know if ADA would be required.
We do have a bulkhead door, but maybe there's two points of access needed.
I think it was for handicap.
Certainly, when this guy comes, he'll let us know, because they know the law better.
Butch might remember this. I think Pat Cannon was a rep at the time when this was built. I think that was.
Yeah, he was, and then there was an expansion into the basement for.
Because of the vaults being down there.
That's when that was put in for that purpose, so the public could access those stuff in the basement.
That's my right guess.
Okay.
Maybe after I hear from this fellow, I will talk with OSHA and ask them more about that. If we don't, if we don't have people using it other than for simple storage, maybe that's not required for the public. Would need to get down there. I mean, I don't know. It's kind of a scab, I'm afraid, to start picking at.
Really?
Well, yeah.
Nobody, nobody heard that, right?
We don't need an elevator.
It's a convenience.
Any other questions for John? Any select board member remarks? All right. Any public comments? Hi, Butch.
I have a little bit, if you want. Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, to the board and to the town manager and to your folks, I wanted to bring you up to date on some things that are hopefully happening, or will be happening within the next two or three weeks concerning your town meeting and voting. So Monday, the Legislative Joint Fiscal Committee met and approved a $2 million expenditure to assist the towns in voting and holding their, their town meetings and informational meetings remotely, and yet being able to conduct elections similar to the way we did that in the general election in, in November, by sending out ballots to everyone or something along that line. There's a bill that's, will be moving through the House starting tomorrow and the Senate to, to make accommodations for the towns to be able to A, send ballots out. Currently, current law prevents you from doing that to everybody. And B, to be able to vote remotely. So you are now allowed to, by current law, hold your meeting, informational meetings remotely. But there's some kerfuffle going on about how that's all gonna happen if somebody wants to nominate somebody from the virtual floor. So the legislature will straighten that out, and we will appropriate those funds to the towns. I'm not sure how it's gonna be split up. As a matter of fact, I don't think anybody's sure as of today. We'll know more within two weeks, maybe a little bit longer, but certainly before your meeting. And I've been in contact, actually, Janey Collins from the RNSEU has been in contact with me about how they can do their meetings also. And so, these type of things will include the schools. And I'm, I'm probably thinking that the school will ask our local clerks to include their ballot for their budget, et cetera, in, in a package, should you decide to send ballots out. And, and I just finished up a meeting a few minutes ago with the Brandon Water District about how they can conduct their, their annual meeting also. And there's a couple little issues with them. So we're kind of, we're aware of that. And as you know, we've, we've waived a lot of the requirements for running for office and those type of things. But we fall a little short on some of the, looking forward. We were hoping we'd be in a better shape with the COVID than we are today. And instead of being in better shape, it obviously just keeps getting worse. So that's on that front.
Can I ask, can I ask a question, Butch?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, and that question would be, you think the legislation will talk about possibility of postponing town meeting date into something like May, where people might want to do it outdoors in tents, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I think, John, I think there's already provisions for that to some extent. The, the schools have a problem with that, should they. So they would have to hold their own election then. So they're hoping that you, you all will get lined up and, and have, have, you know, one, one ballot, one meeting, that, that type of thing. They'll, they'll be out of money by May. So, so basically, they, they need that vote at around-town meeting time. I can't speak for them, but that's, that's the sense that I got from, from the superintendent. So.
What are the known options that were available, that's all?
Yeah, right, right now, I don't believe you have that option, but it may be in that bill. Nobody's seen the bill yet, so it's just all speculation right now. Any more questions on that?
Well, so you said, though, we'll know by next meeting?
Well, no. No, it will be probably towards the end of the month, Madam Chair, before the bill works its way. I mean, an accelerated pace would be two weeks. Regular pace would be three weeks, so.
Problem, the problem, the problem we have is, is timing and the publication of our town report. I know Linda, I know Linda's looking at January 25th as a drop-dead date to get our final product to the printers so they can generate it in time to meet all the other statutory deadlines for distribution. So while January 20th might allow us two more weeks to see how it's going, I don't know that we can make a decision beyond that.
Right, and I, and I agree, John, and the legislature is very aware of the timelines, as you well know. Very aware of the timelines, and we're doing the best we can. I suspect we'll suspend rules to allow this bill to move forward so that you'll have some surety before you have to have your information to the printers and get your, your town reports out to folks. I did find out, though, that there is a mechanism to delay. If there's something happens, there's a mechanism to delay your town meeting. If you have a warning and if you're ready to have the meeting, because you operate under Robert's Rules of Order, you could open your meeting and close it right away, with a date certain, should you run into some troubles along those lines. That probably wouldn't be the best idea, because you obviously are not going to congregate at the town hall. Yeah, and, and one of the issues is, is it's illegal to vote on Zoom. So, and one of the problems with that is most towns will not have a secure voting application that they can use. So when you vote, you vote anonymously. So that's, that's why, that's why you can't do that. So there's, there's some timing issues here, and we're, we're well aware of them. And, and we're, as far as the legislature go, we're, we're moving at warp speed, which means, you know, a normal person would do in a day, it'll take us a couple weeks.
Sounds all right.
So I want to move on. I did get a phone call from the chair this evening around 5:00 o'clock or so concerning the new COVID money that's coming into Vermont. And there was an article in yesterday's paper that I did, did reread. And one of the questions was, what about businesses? What are, do we think businesses are gonna get any more money? And this, shorten this up as much as I can, but currently, it looks like the Vermont share at this time will be $500 million versus 1.25 billion that we got in the previous bill. The administration, Scott administration, is now reviewing the proposal from, not the proposal, but the bill that was signed into law. However, it's, it's 5,500 pages long. It includes the, the operating budget for the country for the next year. So they have to, they have to glean out the various pieces out of that. Currently, nobody knows the rules behind the spending. We're thinking we're gonna see those spending rules by the end of January, but we're not, not sure. This time, the money is more targeted than it was in the first, first bill. The first bill allowed us to basically break the money up where the need was. And this time, it's more targeted. As an example, there's 200 million in emergency rental assistance and homelessness prevention, 6.2 million in education relief funds, which would be very welcome, 125 million in elementary and secondary education relief, which would be more than welcome, 34 million for higher ed, 35 and a half million for vaccine assistance, 180 million for public health, childcare money, rural transit money, $50 million for state highways, which could affect the towns, some money for airports, and a million dollars for low-income wastewater and drinking water. And I will qualify that low income, because we know and you know very well that your water, your, your borrowing rates from the state are based on the income of the town, the various average, average homeowner income. So many, many of your people in your town will qualify for some of this million dollars if they got in trouble with their wastewater and drinking water. We don't know the rules yet, and we'll see that. And I think most of those numbers might add it up pretty close to 500 million. But, but that's what, that's what we know about that right now. And we're desperately awaiting some guidance on, on how we can get this money out. Unfortunately, I don't see anything in here for economic recovery. There's, I don't see anything in this bill for allowing us to use some of this money to balance the state budget, which we are, as of yesterday, we're 180 million dollars short on the, on the general fund and 63 million dollars short in the ed fund. And I, I will caution you, when you hear state estimates, oh yeah, the, the, the sales tax came in above projections, the real estate taxes came in above projection, vehicle taxes, all those taxes came in above projection, and that's very true. They are coming in above projection, but the projections have been dropped, in some cases, 30% of what we had initially expected. So we're, I wouldn't go spending the bread money quite yet. So that's, that's me. That's, that's my report to you, I guess.
Thanks, Butch.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? All right. Was there any other public comment before I move on? All right, so I guess we'll skip old business and go to new business. Chief Warful, if you want to talk about the expanding police coverage for the Omnia truck detail?
Well, I come before the board tonight because at the end of the year, Rutland Town gave up their, their slot over there. And I just put a feeler out to see if we could get it, and I spoke to John. And we wrote a letter to the HR person over there, and they offered it to us. It's Thursdays, the same hour that we're working, it's another five-hour block. And I come before the board to see if it's okay, if we do it.
And there's really a couple things to consider. Obviously, we make a little money on the hourly rate, but I think what this gets us is access to the possibility of larger tickets on that Thursday. So I think that's a good reason to consider it. I know Joe, in the past, has been upset or disappointed that Rutland Town played a role that we might play. And now with a young police officer looking for hours and experience, that could be something that we could put Dave Sulya into for a large, a lot of those shifts and have him get some valuable training, learn the area, learn, learn how to deal with truckers, et cetera. And also, every now and then, we'll get lucky with a larger ticket in terms of the revenue we can bring in. Those, those were the things we were thinking about.
I hate, hate to see the trucking industry picked on for revenue as a revenue source. Because when we go to buy a box of Wheaties down at Comoda's store, that comes to that store by a truck. And I realize.
I doubt, I doubt by an overweight truck.
Well, it may not be an overweight truck. I realize, you know, there's a story goes with the overweight business, although I, I don't think it's as bad as it used to be. The industry that I'm in is noted for being a, well, all your raw materials are heavy, whether it's wood, stone, gravel, clay, whatever. So I'm in one of the heavier industries. But, you know, to hear somebody say, well, we can just go write some more tickets to trucks to raise revenue.
Hey, Joe, we don't, we don't sit over there and pick on every truck. I could pick on trucks all day long if I wanted to.
I do.
I don't do that. These trucks make it obvious for us to have to do it.
It's a service that Omnia has asked for, and they'll have some department doing it, whether it's us or someone else.
I'm aware.
And it's damaged the Pittsburgh road.
I'm aware that there's probably a few people who run in that neighborhood that have complained and.
More than a few, Joe.
And you have to do something, I mean, you have to respond. I mean, I recognize that.
We're making it simpler for Omnia, who is very friendly to this town. They've required it because they're, they were tired of fixing the damages that these trucks were causing. They requested us. They accepted, and it's, it makes, it makes a little bit of money for the town. Because, I mean, I understand how you feel about trucks, Joe. Okay, but I could sit on Route 7, and I could pick trucks apart all day long. I choose not to do that, okay? But I understand that everything that comes into the state comes in by truck. I do, okay? And they're trying to make the livelihood. But when they, they back over fire hydrants, they pull down tower lines, somebody's gotta hold them responsible, because they won't be honest enough to sit there and wait for us. They're gonna take off and get, try to get away with it.
Oh, I'm sure you're right, Mike.
And we're only doing what Omnia has requested us to do.
But I, I guess I've had a. But I I I guess I've had a couple of experiences in my, over the years, where I got strayed off onto a road that I shouldn't have been on, maybe. I didn't get in trouble, I was lucky. But it was an honest mistake. And they've come a long ways. Wes Rutland has put signs up over on the other end of Whipple Hollow Road, which was never there before.
That is correct. We have the legal signings that the states allow.
Some of these guys, and and like myself, I've been down Connecticut with a tractor trailer, load of bark mulch and wound up on the end of a dead end road. Not that I wanted to be, but I I wound up there and I could have been liable for all the good to find. But these guys, some of them are up here, probably it's the only time they've ever been in New England in their life and maybe the only time they ever will be.
I understand that, Joe. And I ask them, and 99.9% of this is first time I've ever been to Vermont, okay?
Right.
But that still doesn't make them going to excuse those signs are as big as they can be by state law. If they can't read, somebody's got to hold them ultimately responsible.
I I fully agree with you, but I guess.
And if it's not us, it's going to be a sheriff's department.
I I think.
I know, I think that's ultimately the thing is that Omnia is asking for this. So either we decide that we're going to fill or they're going to find someone else.
I regret, you know, phrasing it the way I did. But I remember when we didn't get that third day, you seemed upset that we didn't get it. And so I thought you'd be pleased to know that we've had this opportunity to do what Omnia wants us to do because we'd rather do it ourselves than have somebody else involved in it.
Well, I I realize there has been and probably still is and may always be a somewhat of a problem.
I'll I'll take the bolt by heart and make a motion that we authorize Mike to take the extra hours.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks, Chief. Good night to you.
Night, Mike.
And let's see, so then the other than we have people here pulling the bioretention pond structure, correct?
Barbara Noyes Pulling is here along with an engineer from a firm. And I can't remember the engineer's name, I'm sorry, but maybe you'll introduce her, Barbara, and let us know what you have in mind tonight.
It's her name's right there.
In tiny, tiny letters.
Binoculars.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you for giving Nicole Kesselring and myself your time tonight. Nicole is is a president of Enman Kesselring in in Rutland. And we're here tonight for a couple of reasons. We're putting the final touches on a 100% design for a stormwater runoff and treatment project that was part of a water quality block grant that the town received. And the area of that project is Mechanic and Arch Streets behind the fire station and the town garage. So we want to present the the findings, the final report to you tonight, and Nicole will be doing that. And then there's another other little housekeeping things that we need to do to finalize this grant. And one of those is a letter of commitment to go to construction on this project if funding is available and if you're willing to sign such a letter. And the other is a letter for operations and maintenance for the project, if it's funded. And we gave you a copy of a draft agreement for that. And then I'd like to spend a couple of minutes on on an opportunity to construct this project, another grant opportunity. But first, I think I'd like to turn it over to Nicole, who's been doing the design work on this and for her presentation of what she found.
Sure, thanks, everyone. And thanks for giving us the opportunity to provide the design for you. I'll give you a little overview of the project and then I'll turn it back over to Barbara. But the, as Barbara said, we've designed a stormwater infiltration basin at the intersection of Mechanic Street and Arch Street. It's it's classified as a bioretention area because it's a an area that will not stand full of water on a regular basis. It'll just pool water temporarily and allow that water to infiltrate during and immediately after storm events. And the area of capture is about 6.9 acres. It encompasses the Lothrup School and the Pleasant Street area. And more than half of that area is impervious, which means it's either rooftop or asphalt sidewalk or gravel and areas that stormwater runoff, where it picks up pollutants and also runs off of those surfaces very quickly. So what we were looking to do was how we might be able to treat some of that water before it enters the the Sugar Brook. And there is collection on Pleasant Street in front of the Fire Department and then a pipe that runs through the Fire Department property before it discharges under Mechanic Street into the brook. And so our design intercepts that pipe with what we call a flow splitter. So it's going to split the low flow for the one-year storm events. And, or I'm sorry, it's the water quality storm event. So it's the one-inch storm event that we're looking to treat with this treatment system. So it's going to route the one-year, or sorry, the one-inch storm toward the bioretention area. And on its way, it's passed through a treatment structure, which is, you can think of it as a swirl separation unit. It'll separate out very small soil particles so that those don't enter and clog the bioretention system. The bioretention system itself is going to have the appearance of being like a planted garden. It has some volume that the water can pool in during a storm event. But under normal circumstances, it's going to look like a garden planted with shrubs and a mix of perennial plants. And then from there, there's an overflow back into that same pipe that comes through the Fire Department property so that it can join the rest of the flow going under Mechanic Street and out to the brook. The larger storm events will continue to pass through that existing pipe. And so this system should only see the smaller storm events so that it doesn't become overwhelmed and like washed out or flushed out by larger storm events. The location of it is right at the corner there is in conflict with where the salt and sand, there's a, I'm not sure if it's just a community salt and sand pile, but that would have to be relocated as part of this project because the bioretention area is basically consuming the location where that's stored right now and it would not be a compatible use. The, just to talk about the sizing of the system a little bit, the location had some limitations in terms of how large we could make the bioretention system. If we calculate the areas available, there was only 25% of what the state standard would be for surface area available. However, the soils at this site were very good and had high infiltration rates. And when we modeled the project using a hydraulic modeling software, it shows that the project should infiltrate the entire one-inch storm and that there shouldn't be any overflow. So that really, I think, achieves the goal of what we were after of treating and infiltrating that that most common storm, that one-inch storm and bypassing tho- those larger storm events. I'll take any questions if anyone has any.
Can I just ask one? Is this basically the functional equivalent of a dry well?
I guess it could be considered similar to a dry well. I think it's providing more treatment in terms of filtering that stormwater before it enters the groundwater table. There are standards that it has to, the bottom of this treatment unit has to be three, three feet above the seasonal high groundwater table so that you're not contaminating the groundwater table.
And Nicole, this is all on municipal land, right? We we thought at the beginning, before before you did the design, that there might be a landowner involved in the neighborhood, but it's, that's not the case, right?
That's correct. We thought this system might need to extend a little north onto the property of the adjacent landowner. But there's a municipal sewer line running just on the northeast side of this treatment practice. And so that limited how far we could extend the system in that direction so as not to create any disturbance or decreasing the cover over that sewer pipe.
Now, this area will have to be treated or have to be cleaned out and re redone the surface of it on a on occasional, depending on how fast it fills up on it.
The most common maintenance is going to be probably replacement of mulch. The, with the design having the pre-treatment unit on it, it should keep sediment out of this bioretention area. And so we shouldn't see the surface of it clogging whereby you'd have to, you know, scrape the sediment out and replace mulch. But it, my expectation is the the maintenance will be more akin to, you know, keeping a garden area, some weeding, making sure plants are surviving when they're first planted and then replacement of mulch as that's necessary.
And maybe maybe vacuuming every once in a while, Nicole?
So on a on a periodic basis, and I don't expect this would be on an annual basis, the treatment unit will require vacuuming, similar to the way you'd clean out a catch basin. It's once the sump in the system is 75% filled up with sediment, then it would be cleaned. And that's really the majority of the maintenance that it requires. It will also capture any floatables, like, you know, in some environments, you might have soda bottles and such washing down. I don't expect you're going to have a lot of that trash and that type of material collected in this. I think it's primarily going to be collecting the sediment. One of the, one of the intents of this project was really for reduction of phosphorus, since this is in the Lake Champlain watershed. And we've run calculations, but it's it's kind of a standardized calculation form that the state has on their website. It showed 2.3 kilograms of phosphorus removal, but that's only based on the function of the bioretention system. That calculation doesn't take into account the sediment that would be removed in the treatment unit. And phosphorus is typically bound to sediment. So a lot of phosphorus would also be removed through the treatment unit and the sediment settling out there.
Is there any particular thing we're supposed to do with this phosphorus once we vacuum it out or it can be disposed of anywhere other than the brook?
It it probably should be disposed of in an area where it's not at risk of, you know, flowing into a waterway somewhere.
In order to, in order to perform this maintenance required, would the towns, they have a backhoe presently in a bar, in a front end loader. Would that equipment serve to maintain and and take care of this project? Or will they have to, the town, or will they have to contract out the service to maintain this when it does need servicing?
It it sounds like for vacuuming out that treatment unit, that might need to be a contracted service. How do you typically clean catch basins today? Do you contract that out?
We've got a good highway crew and they've got lots of toys like leaf vax and that kind of thing with probably a pipe long enough, I would imagine, to reach the bottom of this unit. I would think they'd be able to do it in-house.
Yeah, if if they have that type of equipment, they may very well be able to clean this as well. It's it's not much different than a typical catch basin, other than it has some internal internal pieces that control the flow and create this swirl that then captures the the sediment in the unit and has it drop out of the water.
So to wrap up this grant, which which was 100% paid for by the state, there was no local match, we we will need to come up with some sort of agreement from the town about about this operation and maintenance. And we gave you a draft proposal and it lasts for 20 years. You know, just what we've been talking about, the the work that needs to be done. And what we gave you for a draft, we may need to add one more thing. And and that is to wrap up this grant so a commitment to implement or or construct this project. And we can probably add it to the operations and maintenance draft that we gave you on that cover page, the signature page. We could add a new number one or just change number one around to include that. That way, we can wrap up this grant. And what I also wanted to talk to you about is there's another round, and you have a leg up now, that you have this 100% design to get through to this next round and get more 100% state-funded money, no local match, to actually construct this project. And there is a pretty tight scheduled timeline. The application needs to be submitted next Friday, the 15th, a week from Friday. So we need to wrap up this current design project and get that application together, which I think we can do if you're willing to to go that route. And, you know, I think the the project, and correct me if I'm wrong, Nicole, we're probably looking at like a $43,000 construction project, something along those lines. And it needs to be done in the the 2021 construction season by November 1st, which I think is quite doable. And correct me if I'm wrong, Nicole, but it it seems like, you know, just be, you know, maybe a month or two of construction for that. And so the deadline is January 15th and we find out in February if you get this next round of money.
Now, about the the construction, is that something that you would expect to be specialized enough that you'd want or the town would be expecting to hire a contractor to do that? Or are you looking for town help like you did with those test pits?
There, yeah, it'd probably be much like, much more like this this round where we we go out and we don't exactly bid it, but we we get qualifications, proposals, and we pick a company, that's the Regional Planning Commission, gets the money and we subcontract with a with a company like Nicole's to do the construction. And if if that company needs some additional helper or, you know, like we did in the first round, where it was just handy, it was right by the town garage and we use the backhoe to do some test pits, there might be some situations like that.
And we can charge you for that as we did before.
Yeah.
My my expectation is. My my expectation is that um you know, you you'd have a site contractor that gets hired for probably the majority of the work. Um we would have some construction oversight and is some engineering involvement just to see that the project is implemented per the design. And um I I think Barbara's right, um you know, maybe you're looking at about a month of construction time out there.
So is it right you need two things from us? You need a commitment that we will take on the operations and maintenance, maybe in a revised agreement, and then a commitment to um or or a decision tonight as to whether we wanna authorize construction with no cost to the town to implement this practice, correct?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor, say aye. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Barbara, should I expect kind of a revised O and M to sign then?
Yeah, I think that probably would work out best if we just just revise what we came up with. And um and then uh if the chair could sign that. Well, I'm not sure what your policy is there, if you if you like everyone to sign it or or if the chair can sign it.
Can they delegate the town manager to sign off?
I think so.
Maybe that's in your minutes, Kelly, authorizing the TM to sign.
Actually, we have you down as the responsible party now, John, so. But let's keep that responsible image going.
Your wheelbarrow on a shovel, John, clean it out.
That sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Well, maybe we should just go back up to old business and talk about town town meeting options and logistics. We mix that in with the town meeting warning.
Absolutely. I was just gonna say the same thing. Um they're both really overlapping. Um as Butch has said, we already have legislative authority to simply keep our normal dates, have uh the information meeting the night before via Zoom instead of at the school, and still have voting um on on all articles, not just the officers, but the budget articles as well. All of those articles by Australian ballot the following day, presumably at the firehouse. That would give us the certainty of knowing today so that there's not last minute jockeying and figuring out what the legislature might do. However, if you're interested in those options that Butch has outlined, you could certainly kick it for two weeks and have further discussion to see what other options there will be. But those sound like they would be mail-in voting uh rather than in-person Australian balloting. And uh eh and you might wanna consider whether you wanna change the date altogether. But from what I heard today, I was on a conference call unrelated to this, but we did talk about town meeting prep. I've heard from a lot of other or several other managers that have talked with their colleagues, and it seems like uh most towns of our size are simply going from the floor vote, which has been our tradition, to the Australian balloting with an a Zoom-in informational meeting. And if you're comfortable doing that and wanna make that decision tonight, we can do it. It'll make life a lot easier for people like Linda putting the town report together so that we don't have to wait on further details. It also would be true about the budget adoption. If you felt comfortable to adopt the budget tonight, that would be preferable to to two weeks from now, trying to uh add that in at the very last minute, like we did in the past.
I'll make that motion that we do uh the have the informational meeting the night before via Zoom and voting at the firehouse the next day by Australian ballot.
And that would that would dovetail nicely in with the school's plans, I think, as Butch will confirm.
Right, all in favor, say aye.
The school have any any kind of a meeting or not?
School will have their own informational meeting as they have in the past. I think they'll also do it by Zoom. And I think they wanted to add their articles to ours in the ballot when we do the Australian balloting.
I mean, you do with the school.
Well, then, all right, so I guess we'll have to review the draft, the the fifth draft of the budget.
Yeah, um the only things we did between the last meeting and this is move, you know, tens of dollars around just to get the final balancing of the budget. Nothing really has changed since um we seen it the last time. And even in these last several sessions, there's been minimal changes. The bottom line is, these are level funded, same taxation numbers from last year for general fund and highway fund.
So our overall budget is?
John, I got one question.
Did we have to cut something to make up for the expenditures? We had no turnover?
Um like every like every budget process, you take a look at what has happened in recent history and sometimes we learn that we've over budgeted for things or under budgeted, and that's where you can make some adjustments to try to reach balance.
John, I got an email from Alababears this afternoon. I haven't had the time to look it up, but do we have any money for landscaping around the office or no?
Um.
I thought our.
I think we have, I think we have a line, um in the past, we've had a line for Pittsburgh Pride, which we've used for flag purchasing, um but I think that's a broad enough category. You could you could talk about that, or there's also a town um building budget from which some incidental plannings could be used. What does he have in mind?
He just wanted to make sure that you want to know if there was gonna be any any money in the budget for that purpose.
For what purpose? How much is involved with that?
Landscaping here?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know what he has in mind, but put it this way, any kind of project he'd be talking about would be in the hundreds of dollars. And even if there's not a specific line item for it, I don't think that would break the budget.
That'd be my duty.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm gonna mostly adopt the the budget as proposed. What are your figures, John? So you put them there?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. The general fund budget, I can do it from the morning, can't I?
I'll need a couple more.
Yeah, I'll get you that. Proposed figure is for the general fund, a budget of one million six hundred sixty-nine thousand, I think that's three hundred sixty-nine dollars, of which the sum of one million two hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars would be raised by taxes. Now, that second number is the number that's exactly the same as last year.
Okay.
That's good.
As to the um highway fund, the idea is to appropriate one million one hundred fifty-four thousand seven hundred seventy dollars, from which um one million fifteen thousand, so one oh one five two hundred, so one comma zero one five comma two zero zero is to be raised by property taxes, and that's exactly the same number as last year. And of course, the village fund remains the same at sixteen thousand dollars um uh to be raised only from village taxpayers.
Okay, so I'm glad we're level funding. But what is that gonna do with this CLA? I was reading Lisa's thing. I mean, I don't fully understand how all that works. Is the CLA more to do with the school budget, or does that affect our municipal budget also?
It is very confusing.
Yeah, no, it's it's a very good question. Um I think what the board's position has been in the past is to explain to voters, as no doubt we would, that um that only affects the rates that you adopt in July. It doesn't change the actual dollars. It just changes the ratio that's being uh charged per 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 tax allowance hour.
Right, but it's e- even though, but what I'm trying to get to, even though we're level funding the budget, there's a high probability people's taxes are gonna go up.
Well, again, eighty percent of the.
No, no, I understand that, but.
By the school.
No, 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 I I that's, I understand that, okay? But what I'm saying, as far as our municipal budget, does the CLA also affect that? Or is that just more the school budget? In other words, with our CLA being down, are we gonna have to go up a half a percent or something on our municipal tax rate?
Though that affects what we do in terms of taxes and setting rates in July. I think the CLA is an indicator of simply how accurate our assessments are versus the market and whe- whether and when we'll have to conduct a townwide reassessment.
No, but from the letter I read from Lisa, maybe I misunderstood misinterpreted it. But because our CLA is now below a hundred, that means our tax rate has to go up.
But it is directly tied into the per pupil spent. It's the, it's like that that whole Act sixty thing where all that money funnels up to the state, so the municipal is, that's why the municipal separated out from the education.
It's tied to the education, not the municipal. Okay, that was my question. I guess I didn't
Yeah.
Phrase it right. Okay, okay.
Yep. Rabbit hole looking into that stuff today, and it's like kinda mind boggling.
Well, it's, yeah, it is.
There does have to be a better way than to pay all our taxes into the state. Have the town collect them and.
Yeah, and then they send them back.
Yeah, the school hasn't got their figures together, so you can put together the town report yet, haven't they?
No, but we've been talking, I think, informally before the meeting, wasn't there some understanding that we were looking at maybe nine percent on school?
Yeah, and that's that's a part of this whole CLA that I don't get, like where they're even basing that number on. Is it from, because the school obviously hasn't, they haven't voted on
Right.
the next budget, so are they basing it on the year before, or are they estimating?
Proposed figures. Even ready.
So.
I'd say that there's some things we can really can't control, and that's largely what the school's gonna do about taxation.
Wasn't that on the news last month or something? I think so, I still don't.
So the the nine percent or nine cents, as we call it, that's that is uh, don't get that confused with what the the Otter Valley uh or our NSEU budget will be. The nine percent was merely an estimate uh by the Tax Commissioner uh as required by law, uh after he surveys, basically surveys the landscapes and surveys, tries to survey school districts to understand what their budgets are gonna be. So last year, if you remember, the original estimate was an increase of twenty-two percent. And the we 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 were able to get that down to four percent. So I in a, to answer Joe's question, I I I I don't know that Otter Valley has come up with their final figure on their budget yet. But I would be very disappointed if they came in at nine percent up. It would be, uh uh that would be a disservice to the taxpayers.
Right.
Uh nine percent is kind of a state estimate.
That nine percent is a statewide estimate.
That's what I, so some of the talents could vary a little.
Well.
Is that?
No, no, i- if the statewide estimate goes up nine percent, that's that's nine percent for for.
For everybody.
Yeah, typically, we don't, we don't get into those categories too much, Joe. And then a lot of it depends on, a- as you all, and I I don't wanna go into Ed Fund one oh one, but uh a lot of it depends on what your school budget is. If you if you vote more money per student than the uh state gives you back, you have to make that up locally.
Yep. What I can do, Dave and others, is in the past, when we've had to get ready for town meeting, there's always somebody in the audience who wants to know, what do these numbers mean for my tax bill? And we can run that based on a hundred fifty thousand dollar home or a two hundred fifty thousand dollar home. I can have that for the next meeting if you'd like.
I think that, well, I think it would be good to have it so people know.
That's a great idea.
So Butch was also, some of the gap or some of the deficit because of the, was there a lack of sales tax that goes into, that provides for education, right? Isn't that a piece that provides that goes into the funding? And was that affected at all because of COVID?
Yes, everything was affected because of COVID. And we actually, you know, the the common thread has been, well, school school costs should be down because you know, nobody's in the schools, but actually school costs are up, but we have bolstered, we have bolstered quite a bit of that with COVID relief money, so uh I hate to say it's almost a crapshoot for for what the uh ed tax rate's gonna be. Uh we'll know more in a month, I guess.
All right.
We have to set, we have to set the rate uh by uh the week after town meeting or something like that.
Well, so aside from the education tax piece, which we have no control over, do we wanna second on our budget?
Yeah, John's suggestion of of uh how much the town tax will be on a house worth a hundred fifty thousand dollars is a great great idea for the town because it separates you from the Ed Fund.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Aye.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Boy, that was a lot of.
It'll make life a lot easier in terms of gearing up for town meeting.
Oh, you can set up everything now.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so I guess the only thing we have left is a
The warning.
Oh, right, the warning.
Does reflect those budget numbers. Obviously, I was tentatively thinking and hoping maybe.
Wishful thinking.
But um so thankfully, that won't have to be adjusted. Um we still have an extra year before we have to raise the issue of cannabis retail. So, I mean, that's why I didn't include it in this year's. I mean, if you feel strongly that you wanna have um a bu- a a vote on that, um I can put an article in as to whether the town wants to um allow explicitly allow e- retail establishments of cannabis within town. Or again, we could certainly take advantage of the long timetable that the legislation has see what other towns are doing and maybe what the impact might be.
Yeah, cuz this this is a need to opt in, right? We have, we have a whole nother year.
That's right.
Then I think we should.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be? Wouldn't it be a good idea to put that in just as a?
That could be other business.
Well, or just an FYI, this is coming up next year. Pro vote or something, just no power behind it, just to get the feel of it.
The wishes of the.
No, but it's not, it would be uh under the generic discussion of other business that's non-binding. Someone could take the microphone and say. Yeah.
Was it specifically written out?
Yeah.
Right.
So.
So if the warning is acceptable based on what we've already done, we can get signatures if you'd like.
Uh, we gotta change the configuration of this room somehow. Have you looked at the warning?
I've corrected it since it went originally.
Cuz I'm on there twice.
No, I know.
Okay, all right, I, you know, I don't think you want two of me on this board.
Oh, and I also had. He corrected it.
No, I thought I saw it tonight.
No, I thought it was.
Cross it off.
No, I think, where is it? I'm, yeah, I'm on here.
Let's see if you're in my um signature page. That's what happens when you do too much cutting and pasting. I've got the same version with different um names for the site, for the signatures.
Okay.
Alicia, Dave, Tom, uh the other Tom and Joe, so.
Okay.
The signature page would would be okay if you're signing off on that.
Need a motion on that, right?
It's in the can, as they say, that's good.
Righty. All right, Lynn, I guess the last thing is uh about the ice skating rink.
Yeah, we have been approached. This is the first time I've heard of this proposal. I know that before my time, as um Rob Ketchum points out in his memo tonight, there's been efforts to do the skating rink uh here. Hard to implement and hard to be sure that it can be maintained properly with limited. So just to hear him shortly, he said. So, just to hear him shortly, he said. Having an ice rink for the town has been brought up many times over the years. At one time, the school tried to have one down on the ball field. Randy also tried for a year or two behind the town office where the ice fits. A lot of people also suggest skating on the swim area pond. The overall problem is it takes a lot of work and you are dependent on the weather. If a liner is used, you have to make sure no one goes on it until it is frozen or the liner can be damaged. Obviously, skating on the swim area would also be bad if the ice was not safe. It would require a very level location with access to water, possible electricity for lights and maybe a restroom. The biggest issue is labor to set up a rink, flood it, continue to spray it with water as necessary and keep it smooth. Snow removal is also another project. Um, there does not, there there does continue to be a lot of inquiries about having a skate rink in Pittsburgh. My suggestion would be to see if there is interest from the rec committee members that might want to try to form a club. Or group that would be willing to plan and volunteer their time to maintain a skating area. Without proper setup and volunteers to do the work, a skating rink just doesn't work. I I will point out that I did let Ms. Carpenter know that Proctor has a skating rink. Um, and that's currently closed due to COVID. And there's one in Rutland, of course, which is also indoors and that's closed because of COVID, but maybe um those are good alternatives. But um, it does sound like maybe we could ask Rob Ketchum to talk with his. Fellow rec committee people and maybe get some further input, but he sounds pretty skeptical based on his own experience with it.
Well, yeah, I I would agree with what Rob said. I mean, if he can get a group of people that are dedicated to it.
Like Ms. Carpenter, for example.
Okay, but not on our rec pond. I think that's way too much liability for the town. I mean, it's bad enough somebody getting hurt on six inches of water, but.
Can't have it in the school because they kicked us off years ago, right, Butch, because of liability? And if you don't have dedicated people, you might as well forget it.
Right.
We've we've been that, how many times, Butch?
Several times, every, we'd go up, people come in, so we'll we'll maintain it if you guys build it, so we build it. Okay, yeah.
I'm saying if they want to do a rink privately, go for it.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
It's a lot of work.
Well, yeah, constant work.
Yeah, just ask Rob to let this, the rec committee know that there's a lot of experienced skepticism. But if they feel very strongly, they can come back to us.
Yep.
Yeah.
Why is it not on the pond?
A lot over the years, I know, but it is a lot of work.
We we've been dug it out all back of the garage.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there was one out here at one time, yeah.
And we never had liners, so it was always either breaking, you get a thaw, then you lose it, it's just.
The village farm would be a great spot.
There you go. There you go.
Because Zeebo could go right next to it.
There you go, perfect.
Burning his ego down trying to stay warm.
Yeah, it's too much fun.
All right, guess we're done with open meeting.